You're all right, Ayman?
So we're now live on YouTube, Chairman, ready to go.
Okay, we'll get started then. Welcome, everybody, to Bletchley and Fennies Stratford Town Council's full council meeting. This is an extraordinary meeting that's been called to do our business today. If I could just remind councillors, if they wish to speak, if they could raise their hands and then they can unmute themselves. Okay, so if we start with members' apologies.
Yes, apologies from councillor Brown, councillor Hewitt, councillor McDonald and councillor Imron.
Okay, item two, members' declaration of interest on the agenda this evening. Okay. Minutes from previous meeting.
Chairman, I think that councillor Bedford wanted to speak. We've still got some legacy hands up from earlier on. I don't know if councillor O'Rourke and councillor Conam want their hands up or if they would like to remove them or if they want them up. So I think maybe they, I think maybe Aisha does. So there's two people to speak, I think. I'm not sure about councillor O'Rourke.
Okay. Right. Okay, so we'll start with Aisha.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to say early on, start of the meeting, I have to leave at half past eight because I've got another meeting with someone else. So I have to leave early. Is that going to be okay?
That's fine. Thank you for letting us know. And then we've got councillor Gavin Bedford.
Yeah, I just want to draw people's attention to 7.3. While I don't necessarily think it's a prejudicial interest, I live on Newton Lees, so, but I will be voting because I don't think it's an interest, just to let you know.
Okay, councillor Kelly Wilson.
Like Gavin, I live very close to this development. But again, I don't think it is a prejudicial interest because it is quite some way from my house.
Okay, shall we move on to the minutes from our previous full council meeting from Tuesday, the 15th of December? We have page one, page two, page three, page four and page five. Is everyone happy with those? Okay, we'll sign those then. Okay, we will move on on the agenda to public speaking. Do we have any requests for public speaking?
No, we've had no request for anyone to make representations at the meeting.
Okay, item five is minutes from recent committee meetings and to consider any recommendations that are not already on the agenda. So we have the minutes from the Human Resources Committee from the 5th of January. Okay, we do have two recommendations on there, but I would recommend that we deal with those on item 12. When we come to that, is everybody happy with that? Take that as a yes. Okay, then we move on to the Finance Committee meeting on the 12th of January. Okay, we've got some recommendations from that. So do you want to review those recommendations now or we can review them under the next item, which is the budget? Bearing in mind that next week we do have a special meeting to consider the budget and to finalise the budget. So would you like to look at these now or do we look at them under the budget review? I'll take a look at under the budget review then. Okay. And also on there is the Queen's Way recommendation, which is for Ron on the agenda. We will take it at that point. If that's okay for everybody. So now we move to item six, which is the budget review from the Finance Committee. Keith, do you want to kick us off on this being the Chair of Finance and the recommendations that you had?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, this is the recommendation from the Finance Committee. But I think that the intention is, Chair, is that the detail will be at next week's meeting. We'll go through it line by line and in considerable detail. I think the purpose for tonight is that if there's any, or if any amendments that someone wants to make, then we could consider those, but also if there's any other suggestions from members that they want considered as part of the budget process.
That's lovely, Keith. I think it's important for everyone to just look at the budget and go through it line by line. And there's a lot of things in our budget and I think we're at the stage where we've obviously got to make up the budget to make it balance. And you need to decide whether the precept should stay the same, what we're budgeting for, or if there should be an increase to the precept. Now, further previously in the year, I understood we weren't going to increase the precept, but that is still something that could be done. But we had prepared the budget previously on the precept remaining the same. When looking at the lines on the budget, we're at that, would like to have and need, as I always say. So we need to look at each line and say, we'd love to have this, but would that be forfeiting something else that the community needs? And unfortunately, we're in a position at the moment where we've got to be quite harsh with the budget, especially if you do not want to increase your precept. So this is something that everybody needs to look at and bring something to the table of what they believe is the right thing to do. Okay. Has anybody got anything that they would like to put forward now that we can get looked at? Councillor Hume?
Yeah, I mean, just looking at the recommendations from the Finance Committee. I understand that there's the exceptional, there's the one-off items that the Finance Committee have resolved to suggest that they should be funded from reserves. But there's two particular items on here that the Finance Committee have essentially resolved to recommend to cut that I think should be included in the budget. And I have shared some calculations with Delia and Keith on that, but I don't want to go into details on those calculations. But I do feel like they should be in the budget and for review next Tuesday. One of them is around the Albert Street toilets. So the Finance Committee resolved to recommend that the budget is basically cut in half on the assumption that it should be closed following consultation. I've got a number of issues with that. The first being is that we haven't carried out consultation. And therefore, we've made a decision on the fact that from the second half of next year, we won't have toilets. And I think that would then mean that the consultation would be a bit of a sham. And we've talked as this council about issues of consultations from other places, and I think it would be wrong to make that cut without doing the consultation and speaking to the users, speaking to others who fund it, assist with funding it, however small or large their contributions are. So I think that should remain, the full budget for the toilet should remain in the in the budget. And the second item is about free swimming. We recently, at the last full council meeting, we recently made a decision to fund free swimming. And actually, I think it is really disappointing to see that the Finance Committee have recommended that that should not be the case. A decision was made by full council, the Finance Committee, whilst it could say there's issues with the funding, I don't think it is right for it to recommend that that should be cut. And it's a decision for this full council and it will be next week. It's really important that it's back in the budget for next week. I think with these items and bearing in mind the recommendations on the items to be spent from reserves, putting these items back in, if we were to keep the precept the same, would mean that we are, we would still be within a sensible budget. So I don't want to go into those calculations. I think it would be useful to see it next week when it's in the papers. But I genuinely don't think we should be taking them out at this stage. So I would like to amend the recommendation from Finance, if I can, to include the free swimming and the full year budget for the Albert Street toilets game.
Okay, Councillor, if we put those back in the budget, do you have anything that you, that you feel that we could take out of the budget?
So as I said, there, and I have laid out some of my thoughts around the funding. Once we, if we, as the Finance Committee have suggested, they've suggested that the three items would be taken from reserves, that's the cost of George Street Community Centre and expenditure on that. That is also Newton Lees, some of the short, the gap that we're having with Newton East Pavilion due to the current situation. And that has also increased the Queen's Way premises come from one-off. Because these are likely to be one-off costs this year for them to come from reserves. Once you take that into consideration and you add back in the add back in the free swimming and the toilets, that comes under 717,000, which would be our precept if we were on a 0%, if we weren't to increase that. So I think it is fairly reasonable. I think it's also worth pointing out, and there are some concerns about the level of reserves. And I understand that in the general reserves. But I would also add that we are, the papers here also show that we're projecting 137,000 pound surplus this year, which will go back into general reserves. So there is, the, some of the concerns about reserves, I understand. But I also think there's a little bit, I think we've got more to play with than actually what we think we do. But I think all of this can be, I think they need to be in the budget for next week so we can have that full and frank conversation about the budget.
Delia, did you want to come in on that one before I go to the next councillor?
Yes, please. Councillor Hume suggested amending the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Well, I don't think that would be feasible because the committee's made a recommendation out of the committee. And I think what council needs to decide tonight is if it wants a version five of the budget, which is based on the recommendations, based on the version that you've got in front of you, which is the version the Finance Committee have recommended. If you want any additional alterations to that, obviously I'm happy to include them. And I can confirm that I concur with councillor Hume's calculations. The budget doesn't obviously show those exceptional items. They're not one-off items. I would think it's more accurate to describe them as exceptional items. If they are met from reserves, then there will actually be a deficit in version five of the budget. There will actually be, yeah, but there will, there will be, there will be plenty of scope within the, within the budget as it is because they amount to 104,000, 104,680 pounds, those three exceptional items. So it would allow for those services to be introduced, although I would ask councillors to be mindful of the basic costs. We have to work towards a balanced budget at some stage, but we do have reserves at the moment.
Then I've got councillor Gavin Bedford.
Hi, yeah. I would just like to kind of echo Ed and just express my concerns about the Finance Committee's proposal specifically to cut the wellbeing, specifically the free swimming. This was a decision made at last council that was based on detailed reports from the clerk and in response to community demands. And we had the version of the budget there last time. That hasn't changed. And there's no new information here in, that we've had that would therefore change our opinion on the swimming, in my opinion. And after speaking with the clerk, I would even see that for next year, the free swimming could be covered by reserves if not, if it's not possible to go with that suggestion. And that we would then look at over the year and making cutbacks in other areas ahead of the next year, next year's budget, which would work towards a sustainable and balanced budget. And I would just really ask if the clerk again could look at some alternatives like Ed's to fit the free swimming into the budget and also report justifying the reserves, as I've spoken previously about with Delia.
We would need to be very careful if we do do the free swim in the next year's budget. It needs to balance in the budget and not take it from the reserves because that's not good practice to keep doing that with the budget, as I understand it. Okay, we'll move on to councillor Terry Stephens.
Thank you, Chair. I echo the other, the councillors exactly on the free swimming and the, and the mental health wellbeing. My only point is, the comms strategy we've got as agenda item nine provides a number of recommendations. Does the budget cover that enough for the council to implement these recommendations? As I think it's a real key step forward.
Would you like me to speak to that? There is, there is, there is 12,000 in the comms budget for a printed newsletter. And I think 5,000 for delivery of a printed newsletter. We've left that sum in the budget with some other minor, smaller sums. And I think the, the objective, I think the way we were thinking at the Finance Committee was that we knew this report was coming to full council. We would leave those sums in there, not necessarily to be spent in exactly that way, but leaving the totality of the communication budget there for discussion in the, in the in the budget discussion next week. I think when councils made a decision on the comms strategy and what it feels about it tonight, I will be in a position to do some more work on potential costs, which you can consider on the 26th.
Okay, thank you, Delia.
That helps. Is there anything else, Terry?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Kelly Wilson?
Hello. So I've got a few points I would like to make in some of the things that have been said. So firstly, I think it's really important that all councillors recognise that we are equally responsible for the financial management of this organisation and it's not just a Finance Committee thing. We are, I think in the Finance Committee, there was general concern that we, we aren't maintaining the financial discipline of spending reserves. And I think I made the point that going forward, I think that if we want to introduce, introduce any new services, the council should be prepared that the new service will incur increase in precepts. And unless we can actually find savings elsewhere. Going on to the free swimming, I think the motion was passed, but I don't think that the, that all councillors had the information that the budget was as precarious as it was. And so I think that that was a suggestion that was put forward. And also, I don't think that any of the councillors knew that this would have a precept, precept impact. If we don't put up the precept this year to cover any costs which go over the budget, then it will have to be a bigger increase next year. And, you know, that's obviously a concern to all residents. With regards to the toilets, I think that we have, I've been on this council since 2016. For years, we have asked neighbouring councils, we've asked businesses, we've, we've asked the bus company to contribute to the operation of those toilets. Those toilets, just the budget for the toilets equates to around 5% of the total budget for the council. And we are, we have, the only income that we get is 1,000 pounds from a neighbouring council. It is unsustainable. If we add on the management time that it takes and the officer time, you know, we are talking, you know, 8% of our budget or there or thereabouts. And I think that more than happy to, to go to consultation, but the reality is, is that these toilets are unsustainable. It would actually be better if we took the hit and bought one of those self-cleaning toilets, street furniture, installed it in Bletchley and, 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 you know, closed the actual toilet because they, there is significant maintenance issues with that toilet building and we won't, you know, it's just going to be a money pit. So I think that that is the reason it's been put forward. And, and I think the messaging that we, you know, we have to go forward to is we really want to keep it open, but actually if we cannot find other income from neighbouring councils who, whose residents use the toilets, you know, equally or more so than our own, then actually, unfortunately, we're going to have to, and we're going to have to close them. And our principal council, Milton Keynes Council, doesn't have any public toilets that I'm aware of, you know, within Milton Keynes. This council stepped in to keep them there, to keep it open, and it can't afford to keep it open now. So I think that it's, it was about going into, the decision was, or the recommendation was made that we go into the new year and we do consult, but actually if we cannot get any other income towards those toilets, that they would have to close.
If I'm correct, the toilets actually belong to Milton Keynes and we maintain them. Is that correct?
Yes, Chairman, we have a tenancy at will. So we, we have a tenancy at will and a peppercorn rent. So we receive no income from, we receive no support from Milton Keynes Council. We also have to pay the rates on the building and the maintenance. The toilet tax is coming and eventually we will be spared the rates, but that hasn't gone through Parliament. You know, it needs the enabling legislation and that hasn't gone through yet. And we don't quite know exactly when the toilet tax will will come in. So that, that will help. But this, but I think what I put out to the Finance Committee is that we've got repairs due now costing 7,000 pounds to the roof lights. We've got very limited security of tenure with Milton Keynes Council because we're just on a tenancy at will. And does the council want to invest in that building, which is beginning to show its age? That, that, that repair that I put forward to finance last week is the most urgent of the repairs. But I do know that there's further maintenance work to be done. So the costs for the building are going to increase. And I think that was also in the minds of the, the the Finance Committee. But if I may, I would just like to remind members of our consultation policy. We, we have a policy on consultation and we don't consult on anything unless we're going to be, we're going to take notice of the consultation. Otherwise, it's a pointless exercise. So I think that point does, does need to be. I think that is the policy of the council, which is embodied in the policy documents. I think all councillors should be aware of that. And I did highlight it at the Finance Committee last week.
Okay, there was just one thing that I wanted to make perfectly clear, maybe not. So if we do all the repairs to that building, because we're on a tenancy at will, it could end within months.
Yes, we've got very little security of tenure, very little security of tenure on a tenancy at will.
Bearing in mind all the development that's going on around there.
And that it is right in the heart, if you look at that site, it is right in the heart of the central Bletchley prospectus area, which is, you know, close to the sites that have been designated for development.
Okay, so that, that is something that we really need, need to be mindful of. So the next person I've got is councillor O'Rourke. Okay.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you.
Oh, thank God for that. I'd like to agree with everything councillor Kelly Wilson said. I attended a meeting in 2009 because we've been talking about it since 2008, which I believe is when we took the toilets over and we opened them. And when I attended a meeting, the West Bletchley Council asking for all money, they said they don't really see Bletchley as their town centre. Most people go shopping up at Westcroft. And they had no interest in the toilets whatsoever. I know that's a long time ago and their attitudes might have changed, but we've been asking for money from West Bletchley for years and years. So I can only agree with everything councillor Kelly Wilson said. That's it.
Okay, even though I haven't got an electronic hand, I'm not sure if Marie and Keith wanted to come in. Yeah, Marie did. Did you?
Yeah, sorry, mine was just a query. I did query this at the Finance Meeting. Was regards to the swimming, sorry to quickly go back onto it again, but I just don't want to be seen to agree into something and then you're going back on it afterwards. So I just want clarification that we did all agree to the swimming. And then now we're going back on it again.
Okay, well, I don't know whether every council, but it was a resolution from council that we agreed the free swim. So it was an overall majority that won that vote to do the free swim.
Yeah, so how does it work then? Why do we go back on it again? Because
Yeah. Would you like me to speak to that, Chair, in terms of standing orders or would you prefer to?
No, that's fine. It's good. We'd have to defer standing orders to the bench.
But, but yeah, there's a process in the standing orders that has to be followed if the council is minded to overturn a decision. So I can, I can send you the relevant portion of standing orders, but the, the, the standing orders specifically say that decisions should not be revisited within six months unless there is substantial new, new information. And the council agrees that there is a good reason for reopening the subject. And there's a procedure to follow in standing orders. So the council will need to sort of invoke that procedure and follow it through when they come to look at the budget. If they, if they intend to change the decision, they will need to sort of go through that process.
I just wanted to highlight that. Thanks.
Any other queries? Okay, Kate?
Thank you, Chair. Just want to, the, the, want members to be aware, without going into detailed discussion, because that's for next week, is that by taking these exceptional items out of the budget, it's not painless. We still take that money out of reserves. And that, that, that money coming out will be something
What is frozen? Did I know that?
Pardon?
Has it made?
Ron, it's Sheila.
Okay, you're all back now. Yeah, you're all back now. It's okay.
Go on mute, Ron. Go on to mute. Sorry, Keith, carry on.
We will be taking about 100,000 pounds out of reserves for, for that, just slightly less than that, for that item alone. If you then tack on the uncertainty regarding our income from some of our fairly large income sources, such as Newton Lees Pavilion and George Street, add that on to the uncertainty and put that on to the, some of it into our reserve requirement. In addition to that, the council have also said they wanted to provide money to the town deal. And that again, they've said will come from reserves. Now you start adding that lot together and you are probably going to exceed half the amount of reserves that you currently have for general reserves. And that is not sustainable as a council. Within two years, the money's gone. And you're not putting anything back in. So I would suggest that when members go away for this next week to think about it, they think about what the repercussions of their decisions might be on the reserves and also on any precept in future years. Thank you, Chair.
I think that's why I was trying to highlight, we would all like to deliver these services. We all want these services because we want what's good for the community. Unfortunately, we haven't got the budget to do so. So we do need to look at cuts and its need and would like to have, which we've got to look at at the moment. So I think, you know, Keith's right. So going on from that is the second
Okay, I would just like to just correct some bits that I think Keith has said, if I, if I may.
No, we're going to do this next week, I think, councillor.
No, 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 no. I think it's important to correct some points.
You have already spoken.
Some inaccuracies and the councillor E D has stated, he says that all of the money will come from general reserves. There is, the finance recommendation actually states that the George Street, the George Street extraordinary costs would come from the George Street reserves. It doesn't state whether the Queensway should come from general reserves. I think that, and this is one for next week, should come from the property premises. But also, he's also mentioned that there won't be any addition to general reserves. Actually, that's not the case. We've got a projected underspend at the moment of £137,000 this year. So that will be added to general reserves. So I just wanted to add that in terms of that whole point picture about reserves, so the councillors can maybe think about that for next week. But I just wanted to correct some of that. I think there was some differences in what was said.
Okay, so we've all had a chance to speak now. What I want to do is, we did have a difference of opinion from the recommendation from the Finance Committee. And I did hear that loud and clear. So I think what we're saying from tonight's meeting is we need another version done as an option with those, the swimming and Albert Street toilets back in, which councillor Hume, councillor Stevens and councillor Bedford did mention. So we have got another budget done with those changes, so we can all see how that reflects. Is that possible to do that, do you?
Yes, Chair, I'll produce version six of the budget. What there will also be next week is more information about the impact on reserves and more information about the precept calculations. I've got all that information ready, but as we weren't making the decision tonight, I've kept that for next week.
So is everybody happy that we do that? Is there anything else that you want to add to that? So we've got everything we could possibly need for next week's meeting. Have I covered what councillor Hume and councillor Stevens and councillor Bedford suggested? Are you happy? Yeah. Okay. Okay, has anybody got anything else that they want to add or ask on the budget? No? So I'll consider that we. Councillor O'Rourke?
Yes. Let me get unmuted first.
You're unmuted councillor O'Rourke, we can hear you.
I'm trying to get unmuted. Dear me.
Aiman, we can hear you.
Can you?
Yes.
Okay, okay. It's about some money that went missing, I think it was last year, about money we give £1,600 to a march and it never took place, did we ever get that money back?
I've reported on this previously to council chairman. The grant was given, the event that the grant was given for didn't take place, but costs were incurred. And we contacted the charity and we had a report back which came to council saying how the money had been spent. And yes, the event did not take place, but preparations had been done. And it was the weather that I believe that caused it. Or there was some unseen reason why the event couldn't take place. And I've reported back on this previously on at least one occasion, if not more.
Right, can you give me the details of what, how I can see these details again on it? So I can report back to the public, a member of the public brought it up in their local shops. I'll need some details of what was given and where the money was spent and how it was spent.
Okay, do you have anything to add, Aiman, to the budget or is that, that's all?
No, that's fine.
Okay, okay, so we're going to move on to item seven, if everybody's happy with that. Though item seven is local planning applications. The first one is for a rear single storey extension. No comment on that. Okay, the second one is at Dobbs Garden Centre. External sales force create extension unit and erect a walkway to connect the garden to central building. No? Okay, the next one is phase seven B of the land at Newton Lees. Anybody? Councillor Hume? You're a mute councillor here.
Just on, have we been asked about S106 contributions on this? And I'm sure that's the usual type of contributions that would be made on this, but have we been consulted at all on S106?
Yes, the consultation came after the planning application, therefore it's been, and after the agenda had been published. Therefore, it's on next week's agenda.
Okay.
You could defer this, I believe, if you wish to, to next week and consider the two things together.
That's something we might do.
They're separate, they're separate decisions essentially, because this is a decision about planning and we have no control over the section 106 agreement. All we can do is make representations as to what it should contain. That won't necessarily influence the planning decision. So that's why I thought it was legitimate to keep them separate.
That's fine. Does anybody want to make any comments on this or we're doing no comment? Councillor Kelly Wilson?
So I just wanted to propose that we do recommend this for approval, however, subject to us revisiting the section 106 contributions. For me, I feel that there are two key ones that need to be looked at with these extra houses in phase seven. I think that we need to relook at the LEAP, the local equipped area of play in phase seven. Because Newton Lees has a significant deficit in the level and standard of the play areas that it has received in relation to some other neighbourhoods. And also with regards to encouraging rambling walks, cycleways, there is a path, there is the path to Newton Longville, which runs from sort of Santa Cruz, Crescent and Trinidad. Sort of, and it goes from the middle of Newton Lees all the way up to Newton Longville. And the part of, the part of the path which is adjacent to phase seven A and B is in a real bad state. And I'd like to see investment go into that path to actually it being more of an asset to our our development.
Wouldn't that be discussed on the next agenda when we do the 106?
Yeah, sorry, I put my hands up before Deena explained that.
But what we could do, if you're minded to, if you're minded to support the application, we could say that we support the application subject to satisfactory planning gain for the community, detail of which will be provided in the response to section 106.
I will so amend my proposed motion.
Do we have a second though? Councillor Hume? Okay, all those in favour? Okay, anyone against? Anyone abstaining? So I'm going to take that, whereas you, everybody agreed that. Anonymous on that. Okay, so we'll now move on to the land to the south of Princess Way and west of Albert Street. Anybody? Okay, so no comment. So that's all the planning applications we have at the moment. So we'll now move on to item eight, which is local planning policy matters. So the first one is to note the V A L P consultation. Yeah? Okay, then we move on to the proposed changes to permitted development rights.
Sorry, Chairman, could I speak on the previous item?
Oh, okay, yeah, go ahead.
So having read the plan, I think, and particularly because in Newton Lees, we are a development where 70% is in Milton Keynes and 30% is in Buckinghamshire or within the plan of Aylesbury Vale. And as we know, there is going to be even more development on the border between Aylesbury Vale. And, you know, I think that we, you know, on this consultation, we do need to reply that we see the kind of argument for growth, but actually we need to kind of focus on two things. The infrastructure before expansion always falls between the gap between the two councils because they have different policies. And fundamentally, these two councils have to find a better way of working with each other with regards to local planning applications which are on the border. Because I do, you know, I don't want to kind of speak ill of either council, but I think that both of them tend to have, well, one more than the other, tends to have a focus on its own boundaries rather than greater area as a whole.
Okay, Deena, is that something we could?
Well, I think that the consultation is actually quite specific. It's on the, it's on the proposed main modifications which have come about, the changes, the main, it's the main modifications that have come about as a result of the inspectors looking at the plan. And I think that comment is constrained to those modifications. So we would need to be able to tie those points to two aspects of the main modifications.
I believe we've mentioned this before.
We did in our response to the original, in our response to the original version of the plan, we did. And we've reiterated that since that first, on the first consultation before the main modification, before the further modifications took place. So we have made that point at least twice, but I understand, you know, I'm in your hands.
Okay, so councillor, it's your point, do you want us to push it again? Even though we've done it several times and Deena's saying this isn't for that particular point?
I'll take advice from the clerk.
I'm not sure how we would tie it to the, to the main modifications.
So we wouldn't be able to do it, really?
Not really, I think it would be difficult.
Okay, so that unfortunately counts, so that's the answer. But just bearing in mind, we have mentioned it twice before, but we have done that bit. Okay, so we're moving on now to the proposed changes for development rights. This is something you can do yourselves, I think, isn't it, do you?
Yes, I've already responded to this consultation as an individual and it's, there's an online questionnaire that you can do on the website. The council is of course entitled to make a corporate response as well, which I can, I can do for you either using the online consultation questionnaire or you can send an email. Of course, they prefer, they prefer you to complete the questionnaire.
Councillor Hume? You're on mute, yeah?
Permitted development, I really don't like permitted development anyway. It's, I think it's, I mean, clearly here it's got, it's a light, Milton Keynes Council's paper on this, which is not Milton Keynes Council doing the consultation. It says, it's a light approach, touch approach, restricts the local planning authority to consider only certain specified effects of development, i.e. these developments don't go through full planner application. So all the things that we would consider normally as part of a power application aren't necessarily all considered. There are a few issues, for example, S106 contributions do not necessarily get, aren't considered as part of permitted development and neither is the requirement for affordable housing. So there's, I have lots of issues with permitted development anyway. And I'm sure quite a few of my councillors here, this councillors on this council probably agree with that. There are huge problems with permitted development. It's an easy way for developers to quickly convert a building, make a quick buck and move on without thinking about the impacts on the community and on the neighbourhood. So I'm against permitted development in pretty much all circumstances. What worries me about this extension, someone here, it's got under prior approval. So it's increased the size of the buildings, there's no limit on the size of buildings that can benefit from this, right? So I believe that's a change. Again, we've got some larger buildings, let's talk about St Sprey supermarkets, a larger building. Under these changes, they will be able to convert to flats without really any consultation with the community or the impact or provide any contributions for doctor's surgery, schools, for redways, we've just talked about on the Newton Lees development, and I have huge issues with that. The other point here is around the fast track, there's also a bit about fast track to build public service buildings, which reduces consultation from 13 weeks to the applications have to be considered under over 10 weeks instead of 13 weeks and reducing the consultation from 21 to 14 days. Now, as a parish council or a town council, that consultation period is really, really important in terms of how we do our meetings. So for example, we are fortunate in fact that we have multiple meetings a month, so we have two sessions a month where we do consider planning applications. So we don't always get caught out with this. But when it reduces to 14 days, we will struggle to do that because we won't necessarily have that a meeting and be able to call it and such like for these applications for public service buildings. For other parish councils, this is much worse because they have one meeting maybe every other month and it's already bad and this will make it worse. And I don't see how reducing this time for public buildings will speed up the process of actually building public service buildings. Because once they've done the application, they've got to go through procurement, it's going to take just as long as it probably does already. So I don't, I'm objecting to that. Yeah, and the increase in buildings and the height, again, there's some points in that and I think, I think that is quite worrying. So I think we do need to make a response. When do we have to make the response by?
Twenty eight.
If we could draft something and maybe consider it next week. I know, I don't, we don't want to add too much onto it, but just maybe draft something. But I would also suggest that as a council, we inform Milton Keynes Council of some of our concerns, particularly around the reduction in that public service building consultation period. So the Milton Keynes Council, so we can ask Milton Keynes Council to ensure that in their representation, on their views, they consider the parishes and towns as part of that. Because who knows, they might have missed that point about the reduction in consultation, but that's a particular concern, I think. And that they need to be taken off as well with the points. So I've not drafted anything, I've not made any detailed proposals, but I hope that might be useful in terms of form of a response that we could draft maybe for next week.
Well, my only concern is the amount of time we've got to draft it. Yeah, we'll try and do it in the time, we'll try and do it. I would have found it easier.
Councillors doing their own one anyway.
Yes, I mean, I think it is important that the council does make a response. Personally, I think that we should probably as the council follow, complete the questionnaire. So what I'll try and do is complete the questionnaire. And all these issues come up in the questionnaire, but so do a lot of others. Now, whilst I can answer, I'm confident I know what the council's response will be on quite a few of the issues. I'm not confident about all of them, for example, the fees for permitted development. Do we think it's okay to charge £28 for a conservatory or something? You know, there are some questions that I couldn't answer for the council. So the best I can do, I think in the time I've got available, is probably go through the questionnaire, prepare it and then see what councillors have to say.
That's in the time period, but as I say, that doesn't top councillors responding themselves.
No, no.
The more people that respond, the better.
The better.
Okay, then, so is everybody happy with that? I'm not getting anyone saying no, so we'll do that then, Ed, if that's okay?
That'd be great.
Yeah. Okay, so we're now moving on to item nine. A report on the proposal for the communication strategy prepared by Breakthrough Communications.
Chair, if you'd like an introduction to this, I know that Support Services Manager is happy to speak to it if that's helpful.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. Obviously, we had a, some of those councillors were asked to fill in a survey, as were the staff, some time ago, regarding our general communications that we have with the town council. We then had a workshop paired with Breakthrough Communications. And then more recently, they then come up with the report that you see in front of you, which has some key recommendations. I think it's fair to say that all the staff are very eager to do, to get all these off the ground because we we recognise that actually there are some areas that we we need to pick up on with regards to communications, and we know there are areas we don't currently reach, which is why some of the communications, the recommendations are about doing some paper surveys, some paper QM, some consultations, making our website much better and much more easy to navigate and to use. So there are the recommendations on the final page, ten, page 10, 11, which obviously will have an impact on funding. But as Dina said earlier on, there are some in the budget, I believe there are some funds already in there for community engagement, which this was fall under.
So if we did all these recommendations, do you have a ballpark figure of how much it's going to cost?
I think the big unknown is is the redevelopment of the website. We've done some preliminary work on that. We have budgeted £5,000 this year with a view to redeveloping the website. And we haven't, because of COVID and the other things that we've been doing, we haven't, we haven't got to that stage. I don't know if if that's going to be sufficient to develop a website of the sort that councillors may or may not, you know, may want, if they want something very dynamic, where we're able to use video more and that kind of thing. But I think a lot of the recommendations can be implemented fairly, fairly cheaply. I think the website's the expensive one.
And and a survey potentially.
And the survey, if we do a printed survey of the whole parish annually, that we need to, we need to research costs on that. And we are, we are doing that at the moment. Jill's done some work on finding the best way to to provide a free post envelope, if that's something that the council wants to do. But I think it's, I think, you know, it was made plain to us by the by the consultants that this strategy that they prepared, deliver a new website, I don't think within this financial year. I mean, I'd like to think we could, but I think it's unlikely. So there is, there will be some funds, but we will probably need to meet the costs of a rebuilt website from reserves. The others, I think we could manage through.
Yeah, a number of things, just changing the way to do something, you know, which so it's actually, it's probably, it's just mostly staff time. There are some recommendations with regards to having some green champions and some business champions as councillors, to be able to, you know, be, if someone wants to write our environmental agenda or to be a link to help us build our links with our business community, which came up quite strongly in our surveys. We felt we didn't have a very good link with it. So those sort of things that we would like to think about. And no doubt, ask if anyone would like to volunteer, would be interested in either of those roles. And then we would be willing to look into that.
I think the report's really good and all the things are really exciting to say. What I am worried about, we've got a budget issue at the moment. And then if we go and agree something, we can't meet the budget because there's no postings on here at all.
No, no, we will, we.
The cost.
No, well, as I said earlier, we will, we will prepare indicative costs for all of the items except the website. We are not in a position to provide costs about the website at this stage because we need more clarity about what councillors want from a website. And I mean, the website we have at the moment is a template website. It's the same as lots of other councils' websites. And it's, and we don't pay very much for it at all. If you compare it with other councils of our size, you know, our costs are very low. But but, you know, how much does a website cost? How long is a piece of string? We need to do proper research and have proper proposals put forward before we know what the cost of that is.
So what are you looking for this evening? Are you looking for us to take the recommendations and put them into practice and go ahead without the website part of it? Just because we know we've got the budget for it? Because there's no point in agreeing all this, knowing we haven't got the budget for the website.
Well, I think, I think if you allow, if you if you could give us an indication of whether you endorse the report and the recommendations, then we can have a look at the budget between now and next Tuesday. As I say, we can't produce a budget for the website. And I think there has to be a separate decision about, I mean, you could perhaps decide whether in principle you think we need a new website. But we can't, I can't, I don't feel we can set a budget for a new website, either tonight or on Monday. I think that would need to be a sum that we agreed to fund out of reserves. And we would agree the budget as and when we know more about what we want from the website. And we've got some quotations, but perhaps that if you could say that, if you say that you want to adopt this, then we will put some costs together in time for next Tuesday.
Okay, okay, because I think it's really good work we've done here, and I really like it. So I, for one, would like to, you know, say to go ahead, but what I don't want is the implications of the budget. But yeah, that's how I'm feeling. Has anybody else got any thoughts? That's a no then. But shall I recommend this in principle to take this? And then we'll get the budget breakdown for next week. And we can decide from there, knowing that the website will be an issue. Is everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay, can I have a second after that? Thank you, Richard. Okay, all those in favour? Okay, anybody against? Anybody abstaining? I'm going to take that, that everybody agreed with that motion then. All right, moving on to the next item is the update report from Bletchley and Penney Stratford Town Deal.
Um.
So you've got, yeah, sorry.
I was just going to say, I think, you know, that the report speaks for itself, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is everybody happy to note the report? Has anybody got any questions? Councillor Hugh?
Yeah, my question is, how was the sum of £60,000 come up with? Was that a request from the town deal? Or was that another pick versus council?
It was discussed, I think it was discussed at finance rather than at full council. And I indicated to the to the council that West Bletchley were considering a sum of £60,000. And members said they would want, they indicated that they would like to match that. That's where the sum came from. It's not related to a specific project in the town investment plan. And it wasn't the sum that the the town, that Milton Keynes Council or the town deal board asked for.
If it was agreed at finance, with a billion such a large figure, it would go to full council, so if we agree.
What was, the sum wasn't agreed. What was agreed was that in principle, the council was minded to contribute to the town, town deal fund. And this was prior to the submission of the bid to to government. It was, it was thought it would strengthen the, it would strengthen the bid. And that was an indicative sum that was discussed, but was not included in any communications with Milton Keynes Council. We just told them that we were minded to contribute.
So we're in principle, but we haven't actually made that decision to send that 60 grand.
No, no, no sum, no sum has been agreed. And my advice to the council would be not to agree a contribution until there are projects that the councils, well, not to hand over the money until there are specific projects that the that the funding is needed for. And then to be, you know, there would need to be some sort of attachment of conditions to the to the funding for the way it was to be used. I don't think the intention was ever that it would just go into a general pot and the town council would have no say over it. It would be if there were specific projects, which we know there are in the town investment plan, which the which the town council has previously identified as being very critical to Bletchley, the town council will contribute to those specific projects.
Okay, so we're having to put this 60 grand into our budget now, aren't we, obviously?
Well, I'm suggesting, I think, that you you just be mindful of this when you're considering the budget. This would be, it's not in, it's not, it's not in the budget. I haven't put it in the budget because it being a sum of that size, my anticipation was that it would come from reserves. And therefore, what I'm recommending is that you designate an earmarked reserve for the town, the town deal, and and earmark a sum. So that with the reserves planning, you've planned for that, and then you can make a decision at the appropriate time.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
That's agreement. Do you want us to go to the vote on that?
Please.
Okay, so all those in favour that we mark 60,000 as reserves for the town deal? All those in favour? Okay, anyone against? Okay, two, okay, anyone abstaining? So according to my adding up, that was carried, Dina.
It was carried, yeah, it was carried.
Okay, so we now move on to property matters. So we need, we need to look at the Manor Road lockup. Is that the first one?
Yes, yes, there's a report from the Environment and Premises Manager there.
This is the, to demolish it that we discussed back in March, wasn't it? Okay. Anybody got any comments on the Manor Road lockup? Keith, you, normally, you've got anything on this one? Do we just go ahead with the demolition?
You're asking me, Jeff?
Yes, just because you've had an interest on the finance, it's come forward.
I don't think we did.
Oh, okay. I thought you'd previously decided, that was my understanding, but I apologize if I'm wrong.
It went to council, didn't it? And it came up as an environmental site.
Yes, that was, it was a town council decision.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, I'm getting it, that it's going to be demolished. We need to know what we're going to do with it after it's demolished.
Well, I think we need to know before before we demolish. The advice that we've had from H and Rafferty is that it's very important that we know what the site is going to be used for before the demolition, because the spec for the demolition will vary according to the planned use of the site. So, for example, do you need to remove the footings or not? That will depend on what the site is going to be used for going forward.
I don't think we've decided, because we've had garden, we had open space, we had parking spaces. I don't think we've actually made a decision, councillor Hugh.
Yeah, I mean, there were some suggestions in terms of how we could use it as a green space, maybe as a sensory garden, maybe as a wild, wild flowering, potential options. Parking for the allotments was also considered, was a suggestion that was raised by a local Western and a member of the allotments association there. I don't think we were in a position to make any decisions on what we wanted to be tonight without having consultation with the community. And I don't think we've done that yet. And I think we need to consider that as a council.
Can I just speak to that, Chair? I am, I do, I agree that there should be consultation with the community, but but we need to consult on something. So what are we going to consult on? We need to have some proposals that we can put forward in order to do a consultation.
And so we got a family.
I thought we were like saying it should be garden, nature, essential gardens. So we're going along those type of lines, that would we not consult on those type of things?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can do some work on planning that and have something to consult on. Another option that's been suggested is a COVID memorial garden for people who live in Bletchley and Fenny.
Because every time we talk about it, we're always going along those type of lines. Is that okay with everybody?
Chair, the only thing is, yeah, the only thing, I live on Eaton Avenue, and there's, it's the, it's the path down there. It's heavily littered down there, all the, all the way down there, and it's consistently littered down there. So I'm worried you could spend a lot of money on plants, making it a beautiful area, and it just gets littered. It is constant down there. So I agree that that there needs to be proposals, then to offer it back to the community and see what they think. It's an absolute eyesore, you know, it's terrible.
The way we might be having a bin down there, eh?
It'd be lovely, wouldn't it? The bus stop is always full of litter as well, but like you say, there's no bins.
So maybe we need to go out. But I would say we want to get it demolished because it, one, it's an eyesore, and two, it's an antisocial behaviour hub.
Well, we could proceed with developing a spec on the basis that it is going to be used for a garden.
That type thing, and just go for it. Is everybody happy with that? Go to the, we'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Can anybody against? Anybody abstaining? So that's carried for you, Dina, so we know where we are with that one. My computer's gone off. Okay, they're not pleased to receive an update on the pipe live allotments.
Yes, there's a report authored by the Support Services Manager.
Sorry, yes.
I haven't got the other one. Oh, yes, I have, okay.
As we know, there's a local resident that's very interested in resurrecting the people's allotment on that site. And we, myself and the environment manager met with her last year. Her plans were to start it in spring. I think she still would like to do that, but COVID has had an impact on time scales and abilities. So it's really just an update to say at the moment, she's currently in the process of writing her proposal up. And obviously, as a town council, we have committed to 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 maintain the site to make sure that it doesn't get too unwieldy again. It has been cleared of the remains of the fire from the previous tenants. So we'll continue to maintain the site in the meantime, to prevent, you know, growth of weeds. And then she'll come back to us with regards to her proposal. She's aware that we have a grant scheme for any support, should she need it. And obviously, we've committed that we might be able to help her with some range of support on, you know, on the initial day of going in, or a couple of days of helping to move stuff as well. I think she's trying to tap into the previous groups, but she has a qualification in, she's a qualified social and therapeutic horticultural practitioner. And she wants to work with groups. Possibly she won't be able to work with disabled because of the site, it would prevent that because she would need facilities like toilets and a shelter. But she was looking to maybe look to the local schools and see what she can do with regards to some of the schools in the area. So health and wellbeing through horticulture.
Right, so that's just for noting, thank you. Before we move on to the the next item, which is George Street, and then following it's Queen's Way. To discuss these two items, I feel that we need to go into private session for some of the things that might come out of that discussion. That's my opinion. I'm looking for advice from the clerk.
I think it's. I think it's, it's fair to say that the report on George Street concerns the, I think the report contains information that, that is about the charity and the tenant, which I don't know that should be in the public domain. It's not clear what, what the next steps are going to be. And I think there are legitimate reasons for considering that should be considered in, in confidential session, although it's a decision for councillors, not me. And I think with regards to the Queen's Way situation, again, there's commercially sensitive information in the report. And it's not clear what the next steps are going to be from that stage. So again, it could result in legal proceedings. So I suppose, again, there's an argument for, there is an argument for not discussing it in public. And item 12, I think, is certainly not a, a report that should be discussed in public because it has implications for individual members of staff.
I'd like to propose a motion then that we move into confidential session from the rest of this agenda. Councillor Graham? Can't hear you, mate. No idea what you're saying.
A second, a second.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favour?
Okay, that's Carrie.
That's Carrie.
Would you like me to stop the live stream on YouTube now for the, the remainder of the meeting will be held in confidential session?
Thank you.